بسم الله الرحمن الرحيم السلام عليكم ورحمة الله وبركاته ومرحباً بكم في مسرح闻 أنا مديس عمر خابد اليوم 1 م May 2023 وبدأ شهر جديد الكثير للتحدث معكم لذا بدأنا بدون أي تفاصيل أخرى أول قصة اليوم، يا رفاق تتعلق بالmost recent بما أن حالة سودان وأيضًا التخلص من حضور من المجتمعات Pakistanية من البلد أخرى 93 مجتمعات Pakistanية تم تخلصها من سودان التحديات والعرضا التي تستمر وآلاف تم قتل آلاف تم تركهم متجاهية 636 الآن متجاهية تم العودة إلى المنزل من خلال الجدة على خمسة طائرة خاصة حتى الآن وكل مجتمعات Pakistanية القليلة ستتخلص من سودان في غضون 24 إلى 48 ساعة هذا تم تأكيده من قبل المكتب الدولي سنتحدث عن最新 من سودان في قسم أولنا قسم الثاني، يا رفاق تتعلق بالافغانستان والاتحاد المتحدة الآن الاتحاد المتحدة، يا رفاق ي主办 اجتماع من المهاجرين الخاصين من عدة بلاد على افغانستان في قطر اليوم للاستماع إلى الأسئلة الرئيسية بما في ذلك التحكم الإيجابي والقاوض للتERRORيز على الرغم من أن افغان التالبان لم يأتون ولكن جمعة Pakistanية تم افتتاحها هناك وال的战略 مستقبلية المستقبلية فيما يتعلق بالافغانستان والوجود في الاتحاد المتحدة في سودان في عكس افغانستان سيتحدث في خلال مرحلة قسم الثاني ثالثاً سنتحدث عن يوم الاعمال الدولية ترى أننا هنا ونحن أيضاً نعمل على يوم الاعمال الدولية يتم تراكمه عبر البلد اليوم كما في أي مكان آخر في العالم للاعتبار والتشير على المساهمات غير المvalمة لل層 من العمل الهدف الأساسي، كما تعلمون جيداً لهذا يوم الاعمال الدولية هو ليس فقط التعرف على العمل الصعب والتعليم لل層 من العمل ولكن أيضاً إنشاء حفاظة على حقوقهم وحمايةهم من الاستغلال وأخيراً، يا رفاق سنتحدث عن مديسي الصحة، عبد الكاتر Patil الذي أطلق البلد على مفردة مخابرات في يوم الجمعة بعد أن كان المريض الوحيد الذي كان قد أصاب بالمرض الآن تم ارتدائه للاعلاج هذا تم إرساله في مقال من مدرسة الخدمات الصحية الوطنية هذا سيكون آخر قصة لنبدأ بالقسم الأول وهو تتعلق بالسودان بما أن حالة سودان التخلص من المجتمعات Pakistanية من البلد وشيء أكثر لقد تم مشاركتنا في المسرح من قبل طبيب زفري نواز جسپال وهو خبير في علاقات الدولية ورائع في العرض في نشرتنا شكراً جزيلاً طبيب ساح على الرغم من schedule مشغولتك للذهاب إلى المسرح لمشاركةنا في هذا القسم الأول قوى المطاف في سودان أُعدت بعضها البعض من الخلافات الجديدة سواء كان واحد أو الآخر هذا الخلاف القديم على الرغم من الحقيقة التي تم اخبارها في الماضي يستمر لمدة أسبوع ثالث على الرغم من التذكير بالاتجاه إلى الحرب السبية هذا أيضاً شيء ما كان يذكروا both factions about هل تشعر أن سودان يسير ببطء وبطء نحو حالة حرب سبية مثلها؟
أعتقد أن الحالة هي حرب سبية على الرغم من استخدام الترمولوجيا معينين وتجنب هذه الترمولوجيا يقولون قوى المطاف في الجانب الآخر هناك قوى سودانية والجانب الآخر قوى سودانية قوى عالمية على الرغم من أنها توجه من قبل قادة الحرب وقوة عالمية هذه معروفة لذات القدار لأنها استخدمت وقت سابق عندما تم إنشاؤها قبل عامين في الدافو ونتيجة لذلك، عمر البشيرة كان رئيساً من قبل لعنصر جنوبية في حكمة釋判 في عام 2008-2009 وبعد ذلك في عام 2013 تم تغييرهم إلى قوة عالمية وهذا النوع من الخلاف يُعتبر مُشتركة للتفاوت على الرغم من أن هناك بعض التكنولوجيات لأن المرضي حوالي 500 والذين تم قتلهم حوالي 5000 أنا فقط أعطيك التفاصيل التي تم تشاركتها في الم报纸 أو آلاف يمكن أن تقولها مغادرة والأشخاص يتحركون من سودان إلى البلدات المقربة ويفعلون الكثير يمكنك أن تقول
لكنك تعرف أن تتحدث عن هذا التحدي والتخليص، كما قلت عشرة آلاف من الناس من سودان إلى البلدات المقربة كيف ت反应؟ الدولات المحيطة، بما في ذلك البلدات المقربة ل这个问题؟
أولاً ما يجب علينا أن ن考虑到 سودان ليس فقط يمكن أن تقول تواجه خلافات داخل البلد و邻地是一个非常不稳定的地方 إذا بدأت من الجانب الشمالي دعنا نقول لبيئة إيريتا لبيئة مصر ثم يكون لديه مساحة البحر بسبب البحر الأحمر على الرغم من أنها من هناك ثم تذهب إلى ما تسميه هذه حرب يامن ثم في واحدة من邻地 كان هناك قاعة عالمية مؤسسة مؤخرة ثم هناك استقرار لذا فإن كل邻地 كان مليء بالاستقرار الناس ينسى تاريخ هذا البلد في القرن الأول من القرن العشرين كان هناك حركة لتنقل سودان بشكل مثير للإلهام لم يأخذوا الكثير من الاهتمام في ذلك الوقت لأن قوة العظيمة كانت تقسم سودان أو مصالح الدولية كانت تقسم سودان ما أفهمه على الرغم من أنك لا يمكنك العثور على هذا في الكتابة لأن في ذلك الوقت، قبل عام 2011 كان سودان واحد من أكبر بلد أفرا-أرب في المنطقة وداخل العالم العربي وكذلك بلد أفريقي ومسلم وفي ذلك الحدث لسبب سودان الشرقية ممتلئ بالكرب لذا كانت الاقتصاد يرتفع وكان المصالح الدولية متوترين من ترعرة سودان أو أرب ملون لذا نتيجة لذلك لم يأخذوا الاهتمام في عام 2010 بدأ في عام 2011 تم تقسيم سودان وسودان الشرقية وإذا رأيت في نفس الوقت عندما حدثت عطلة الأرب تأثير التطور السياسي أو هذا النوع من التطورات 一直都有一个 destabilizing impact على المنطقة لذا في المنطقة بالفعل هناك ملائسيا هناك استقرار سياسي واقتصادي وعندما يدخل هذه المغادرة في المنطقة سيكون هناك حرب ما تسميه حرب الطعام
ولكن هناك بالفعل حرب الطعام في سودان هناك بالفعل ضعف المياه والموارد
يا رفاق، قالوا أن حرب انتباهية تظهر ونحن نفهم أن في سودان هناك انتشارات يعرضا بالحكومة والinstitutions هي التي يعرضا بها الآن هناك dimension ثالث أو هذا القوى المعدنية أو مع دعم القوى المعدنية هناك عامل key actor كان جزء من حزب عمر البشيرة وقادة وفاة عمر تم إخراجه من الجريمة وله followings كبيرة بالطبع عمر البشيرة له followings كبيرة في عام 2019 تم تغييره كان هناك تفاوض بين القوى والقوة التدمرية والديمقراط لقد فشلوا ثم حدثت القاعة والآن هناك رجل ملك والآن هو يدخل وإذا كان يجب أن ت考虑到 خلال ثلاث سنوات عمر البشيرة القوى الإسلامية القوى الإسلامية الميلتنة كانت تحقق نوع من التحفيز على سبيل المثال كان أساما بن لادن يعيش في قرطوم ثم تم تغييره من هذا النوع من الأشياء لذا من هذا الطريقة عندما ننظر إلى هذا هذا dimension الجديدة الردالية الإسلامية الميلتنة لذا فهذا سيؤدي ليس فقط إلى التهديد للمنزل الآخر والشيء الثالث المهم هو أن قوة العظيمة تثق سودان لديه حوض الزراعة بسبب دلت النيل كما تعلم من الطرفين نيل الأزرق ويمكن أن تقول نيل الأحمر ونفط في قرطوم ثم يأتي دلت النيل لذا فهو حوض زراعة كبير لديه كروي مغنيسي وقبل كل ذلك لديه أورينيوم وهو من أكبر منتج من Gold في
الكثير من الاهتمام، طبيب فيما يتعلق بالسودان الآن عندما تخبرني عن كل هذا ما يحدث في المنطقة وبالطبع التأثيرات الناتجة من التخلص من العديد من عشرات آلاف من الناس من سودان هل تشعر أن تغيير geopolitical أو geo economic هو على horizon؟
داخل الشرق عندما نحاول أن نرى ال geopolitics العالمية في context الأوروبا التحدي بين الروس والقوة الأمريكية في Asia القوى الأمريكية والصين بدأت و maintenant هذا كان منطقة غير متحف دائماً تحت تأثير القوة الأمريكية و maintenant الصين هي هناك الصين حتى أنها مثيرة جداً في عام 2010 كنت شخصياً في سودان في ذلك الوقت كان هذا الحركة كان التحديات تشكل والصين كانت في الحجر الأكبر فقط الصين كانت هناك وسمعت نوع من الأشياء أن الولايات المتحدة كانت تجلس في الشرق لذا فإن وجودهم هناك والروس también في سودان لاثنين قواعد لذا من هذا الطريقة هذا هو الجانب ثم داخل هذا لا تنس هذا الجيبوت 每个人都有一个base الولايات المتحدة الصين ثم لديك الروس في سيريا ثم ماذا إذا رأيت initiative للخطوة الصينية نعم لديهم تواصل ينظر إلى السوق في الأوروبا ينظر إلى أوروبا الشرقية ولكن focus الرئيسي هو الشرقية الذي نسميه أفريقيا لذا هذا هو السبب والولايات المتحدة فقد تفقدت تأثيرها هناك هذه الصوفية الأخيرة والرجال الإيرانيين التي تم تأديتها من قبل الصين في 10 مارس هذا كان وكيف يقول المقالين الأمريكيين أن بسبب اعتراف بيد بيد هذه السياسات الولايات المتحدة تُحرق من المنطقة لذا هذه هي الكلمات في الكتابة و肯定会 إنه بالتأكيد كبير تحد بين ليس فقط المصالح الدولية مثل UAE يثق كثيراً بسبب لبيئة والUAE يثق كثيراً في لبيئة الجانب الشمالي من الرجل مع الجانب السوداني من القوى المعدنية وهذه الأنواع من الأنواع والملائسية السودانية يمكنك العثور على ما لا يمكنك العثور عليه في يامن يمكنك العثور على كل مكان
但这确实 وبالطبع你也预测了 وخبرنا عن هذا التغيير الذي سيحدث وهذا التغيير الذي نراهم جميعاً كل يوم أي توقع من حقيقة التحديات بين الطرفين؟
هناك توازن权力 بين الفئة الأسلحة والقوة العالمية ولذلك لم يكن أي جانب مستعد للذهاب على الرغم من القوى المعدنية حيث بدأت الخلاف عندما رسم رجل ملك ملك قال أنه يجب أن ينطوي على رأس الأسلحة إلى القوة الرئيسية والقوى المطاف بدأ يفقده الإشارة وله الكثير من المال من هذا الهراء منذ عامين هو جزء من هذا في عدد من المناطق لذا كان هناك شخصيات وكان هناك توازن كان مفقوداً ولكن في الأسبوع الأخير بعد إصدار الجريمة يعود عمر البشيرة ونحن نرى في أي طريقة يتحرك بشكل عام的印象是他们与军队在一起 إذا ذهبوا إلى军队 بالتأكيد سيكون القوة في خير ثم سيكون هناك فرصة للتحدي والانتقال إلى الأمام باضافة إلى ذلك سيعلنون التوقف عن الحرب ولكن في الواقع لا يحتفظون بالتوقف عن الحرب They announced the ceasefire for humanitarian assistance for 72 hours They are not going to honor Now هذا الحدث الثالث سيكون توازن داخل الدولة 但如果有人说 أن هذه الحرب ستظهر في الشهر أو السنوات المقبلة لا يمكن أن ن低估 هذا التوقع لأن هذا النوع من التنبؤ بسبب المصالح الخارجية قوة العظيمة مصالح الدولية وداخل الدولة إذا رأيت تم تحكمها لمدة ثلاث سنوات من مجموعة واحدة يمكن أن تقول ملائسيا توجه من قبل عمر البشيرة لا يوجد منظمة منظمة لذا فهو estado سياسياً ولا يملكون أي نوع من المنظمة الجديدة وحوض كبير وهذا الحوض قد تم تطويره من خلال هذه القوى الغير مسلمة وسوف يستمر
في هذه الحالة حيث ذكرت أن هناك فرصة قد تستمر لمدة أشهر أو حتى أكثر أين يترك الرجل المعتاد من سودان؟ الرجل المعتاد الذي يعاني من ضعف الطعام من ضعف المياه من ضعف الحاجة العامة للmedicine لأن الكثير من المستشفى تم تدميرها تم تدميرها من خلال هذه التصويت أين يذهب الرجل المعتاد؟ هل سيقدم الاتحاد المتحدة المساعدة necesarita أي من الفئات التي تقترب سيسمح الاتحاد المتحدة المساعدة للناس من سودان؟
أعتقد أن أولاً يجب أن ن考虑到 أن هذه حرب سودان كانت موجودة منذ سنوات خاصة عندما اتفقوا أنهم لن يسمح سودان الشرقية بالإنطهاء وبعد ذلك التحدي في عام 2011 وبعد ذلك فشلوا الذين سودانيين فشلوا للاستفادة من موارد 자연ية موارد المعدنية أو موقع geopolitical أو geostrategic You rightly pointed out The common man is going to further suffer and the beneficiary would be a few warlords or warriors and this will be a new proxy war Recently there was a former Sodani prime minister on the media and in an interview he said that the proxy war is going on So where the proxy wars take place? Where these kind of things? United Nations just flashes Oh, we are sending human And now humanitarian crisis further deepened because of the I think the United Nations Food Department three people were killed Who will go there? And secondly Today world is fatigue of humanitarian assistance and in this world fatigue Let's say Think from where the assistance coming? From Europe? Europe is facing crisis and Ukrainian refugees are there Whereas you can think that from the Asia who will? We have Afghanistan Muslim world is not in a position to give the assistance So Sodani people will be in a move or they will be going into a more deeper and deeper crisis because of these a few power hungry journalists in Sudan
That's very interesting that you point out to a term that is power hungry Speaking of these power hungry journals or people who want to stay in power and you know don't think of the what the people want or what the people need Should we or could we see a transition towards democracy in Sudan? Or do you think this is a near impossibility at least in the next couple of months or years?
I think that Sodani have to develop their own consensus Democratic political system is alien to their political culture However, they have to start because consensus building is important Without consensual approach or democratic approach the war will continue So the democratic approach or concession approach is the only solution for Sudan's current crisis where all the stakeholders sit make a council and move ahead This we were expecting after the coalition between the our forces and the people who were opposing the عمر البشيرة when he was ousted from the power that there would be some kind of institution a democratic process
But that didn't happen
and then the people who sit in front of them they brutally kill them So when I said power hungry journals I mean not It's some kind of an entire society is suffering the region is vulnerable but the entire region is suffering from these kind of things We cannot blame only the Sodani but ultimately the sufferers are Sodani
What's very interesting is that you point out towards other conflicts that began when the last Sudanese conflict had begun when the issue in Darfur also began Do you feel that this will also lead to smaller conflicts in regional countries?
Look, smaller conflicts in the regional countries When I say Sudan is two types of the A Sodani Malaysia will be further available because they were already having Because when there's anarchy recruitment takes place militancy takes place Anarchy always have not only you can say bring instability ignore poverty hunger or disease within the state it has spill over impact Political ideas have always spill over impact or conflicts have a spill over impact So it will be going to further strengthen or exacerbate the conflict in Libya It will be going to have in the Yama It will be going to destabilize this Red Sea It will be going to create a problem of UK's radicalization in Egypt It is going to have a trouble in further in South Sudan So the entire region will be going to have some kind of a share of instability for them and above all when the refugees who will feed them Of course they cross the border and Pakistan is best example that when you have refugees and undocumented refugees how much crisis you have security, political, economic demographic, environmental So every Sudan neighbor is vulnerable to these kind of crises
Let's hope something good comes out of it that some kind of sense prevails to the people in Sudan to the ruling faction Sudan and to the big powers that be despite the interests in the region I really hope that some kind of positivity comes as a result of this Thank you so very much Dr. Zafar Navaz Jaspal who have joined us I am really thankful for you to have come all the way to the studios and have discussed this very important issue that is plaguing the African continent as we speak and the trickle down effect is going to be immense in the coming months if some kind of a truth or some kind of a solution is not brought about if not that there's going to be famine and you know people dying of hunger people dying of lack of water and lack of proper medical resources Thank you sir and to have talked to us about all of this Our second Our second segment, ladies and gentlemen concerns something that we have been talking about since quite some time and that is the situation in Afghanistan We all know about what is happening in Afghanistan We all know the humanitarian crisis that Afghanistan is suffering from but we also know about what the Afghan interim government is also following as far as what the West is asking from it to do in order to be recognized by the by all the important countries across the world diplomatically including Pakistan, including other countries as well The fact remains that the interim Afghan government is not you know agreeing to the conditionalities that have been put forward by the world whether it be concerning its womenfolk whether it be to give them the right to education to give them the right to jobs and this is what has created a whole vacuum as far as helping the people in Afghanistan or the interim government in Afghanistan is concerned The United Nations had some time back also warned that if the situation continued unabated that there is going to be a whole exodus of the United Nations from Afghanistan Now to discuss further this situation The United Nations has called for a special meeting or special envoy from several countries on Afghanistan in Qatar today to discuss the key issues that include inclusive governance and countering terrorism and how to move forward Should the United Nations stay? What should be the future strategy as far as that is concerned? But nevertheless, the Afghan Taliban have not been invited to this meet but they are important countries that are there including Pakistan The United Nations Secretary General Antonio Guterres is hosting this two-day important meeting to reach on many points of agreement of commonality such as human rights in particular the women and girls' rights as well as drug trafficking Now the fact remains and we all know about what is happening in Afghanistan We all know about the trickle down effect of terrorism from Afghanistan to Pakistan in the form of Taliban Pakistan is also concerned China has also had a lot of question marks or conditionalities concerning the Afghan interim government and that concerns the ETIM as well Therefore Pakistan and China are two important partners as far as this whole future of Afghanistan and this trickling down of terrorism is concerned This is, I'm sure going to be one of the important questions that are going to be discussed during this course of the show The United Nations, as I told you is hosting this meeting of special envoy from several countries in Afghanistan today The Taliban are going to be absent as I also told you Envoy from the United States, China and Russia and major European aid donors and key neighbors such as Pakistan are among the representatives from about 25 countries that are taking part in this important meeting And of course groups have been called for this two days of talks by the United Nations Secretary General Antonio Guterres We all know about the little protests that have been going on in Afghanistan as well of the latest small group of Afghan women staged the Weekend Protest March in Kabul to oppose any moves to recognize rulers who returned to power in August 2021 Despite this protest the Afghan interim government says that this is their internal matter The United Nations and the United States insist that recognition of the Afghan Taliban government is not on the agenda as far as this important meeting is concerned The rights groups also fear that the United Nations Deputy Secretary General Amina Mohammed who had said last month that the Doha meeting could find baby steps that could lead to a principal recognition of the Taliban government a principal recognition of the Taliban government. And so, of course, there's a lot of anxiety or you know, question marks that are being raised amongst the women folk in Afghanistan. The United Nations although has said that these comments had been misinterpreted. No country has established formal ties with the Taliban, we all know that, including Pakistan. And the United Nations membership can only be decided by the United Nations General Assembly. The Office of Antonio Guterres had also said before this meeting began in Doha that this meeting is intended to achieve a common understanding within the international community on how to engage with the Taliban on women's and girls' rights, inclusive governance, countering terrorism and drug trafficking. Also, the United States State Department spokesperson Vedant Patel had said last week that any kind of recognition of the Taliban is completely off the table, which means that this is not going to be one of the points that are going to be discussed during the course of this. The only point that will be discussed will be regarding the human rights situation and of course, how to move forward in all of that. The Taliban authorities, as we have told you before as well and reiterating again here as well, they have imposed a version of law that the United Nations has labeled "gender-based apartheid", quote unquote. Women have been barred from secondary education, universities and prevented from working in most of the government as well as the United Nations NGOs, United Nations agencies and NGOs, that is what the United Nations has been protesting about as well, to let those women work for the United Nations agencies. The United Nations Security Council powers on Thursday had decided to condemn the curbs on Afghan women and girls and all, and had urged all the countries to seek an urgent reversal of these policies that have been imposed by the Afghan interim government. Diplomats and observers also say that the Doha meeting highlights the quandary faced by the international community in handling Afghanistan, which the United Nations considers its biggest humanitarian crisis with millions depending on food. This is something that the United Nations has time and again pointed out towards that there is a huge humanitarian crisis that is boiling in Afghanistan that needs to be catered to. But looking at the way the Afghan interim government is moving towards the rights of the women and of the girls, this is, this is moving toward a certain duality of opinion as far as the West is concerned on how to move forward, whether and how to help those people who are in need in Afghanistan. We've been joined in the studios by Naveed Aman Khan, he's a senior analyst. Naveed Sahab, thank you very much to have joined us in the studios to talk about this situation in Afghanistan and this meeting that is being held under the auspices of the United Nations in Qatar without the Afghan Taliban. What in your point of view is going to be the key agenda apart from the fact that they need to find out a way forward in, in order to help those in need in Afghanistan? And also how to move forward as far as these human rights or the denial of human rights to the women and the girls in Afghanistan is concerned? What's your take on that, sir?
Khalid, thank you very much for your introduction about this program. This is very important stage. UN has very rightly decided to summon a session in Qatar regarding Afghanistan and Taliban. But unfortunately Taliban, they are creating problem for themselves and for their nation, their country. They don't understand the realities, the ground realities and the mechanism of the politics of the 21st century. They need to understand the main reality that is how to go ahead in politics and diplomacy according to the standards of the decade.
All right.
The way they have dealt about the women and the girls, it's not like human, it's not Islamic, it's orthodox and conservative approach. And with the conservative and orthodox approach, you cannot move ahead in the, in 21st century like a pride nation.
But Naveed Sahab, which brings me to this very important two-day meeting in which you know, representatives of 25 countries are coming. Do you feel they could, would or would be able to reinvigorate consensus or an engagement as far as human rights, women's and girls' rights, inclusive governance, countering terrorism, drug trafficking? There are very important issues that concern Afghanistan. Do you feel a common consensus could be brought about in this meeting?
Definitely the common consensus will be brought about. But the main concern is the, the attitude of Taliban. How they reflect, how they respond, how they behave and how they think about their country and the nation. This is not the way your country is suffering from the drugs, drug trafficking, the women rights, the human rights, the girls' rights, the basic fundamental rights of your own nation. You are the rulers who are creating problem for your own country. None of the other countries or the nations are creating problem for your country or the nation. And you know, this is on one part, this is very, very fortunate on, if we talk about the, the behavior of the, the other nations who are having concern about Afghanistan, Afghanistan nation, it is very fortunate that they are summoning all this under the auspices of UN, UN.
Now, Naveed Sahab, what I want to also understand is that the United Nations statement says that this meeting is intended to achieve a common understanding as to how to engage with the Afghan Taliban on key issues. Pakistan who's been saying time and again that we need to engage with the Afghan Taliban on key issues. Do you feel some kind of an understanding could be achieved? Do you feel there are countries that are willing to engage with the Afghan Taliban looking at the past comments of all these important countries in the West?
Khalid, all the countries are concerned. All the countries are willing to engage Afghanistan, Afghanistan nation, Afghanistan politicians. But these are the Afghanistan and Afghan politicians who are not willing to come up for their rescue. The entire world is going to rescue the nation and the rulers. But they're not realizing the reality which their nation is facing, which they will face as a ruler. We have been thinking that the, the rule of Hamad Kherzaii and Ashraf Ghani have been very bad regimes. But now if we compare, we think that their regimes were far better. And the way Taliban in their second term have ruled in, within the last couple of years, it is the worst way to rule the country and the nation.
All right. The United Nations, Naveed Sahab, says it faces an appalling choice, quote unquote, over whether to maintain its huge operation in the country of 38 million or not. If the UN does decide to move out or keep, maintain a very small percentage of people, won't that have a very detrimental effect on the people in Afghanistan that are already suffering?
Definitely. Khalid, definitely the people of Afghanistan are suffering and they will suffer if Afghan rulers, they do not respond positively to the international community. International community, the leading countries of the world, they are having concern in Qatar. And these are Taliban who are not even understanding the, the importance and the significance of this summit. They need to understand. Pakistan has done a lot for Afghanistan, but Afghanistan, they don't want to do anything for themselves. Any nation cannot do anything for Afghanistan if Afghan, Afghanistan and Afghanistan rulers and Afghan nation, they themselves don't do anything very positive and concrete for their own nation.
Now, Naveed Sahab, the Afghan Foreign Ministry in a statement says that the ban is an internal social matter of Afghanistan, the ban on women from getting education. Now, do you feel some kind of flexibility could be achieved? Do you feel the Afghan government is in any way ready to show some flexibility on this issue of education of, or of women going for jobs in the social circle or any circle whatsoever in Afghanistan?
Khalid, Afghanistan of today is Afghanistan in 21st century. It is not the matter of first century, it is 21st century. You cannot ignore the, the important things which you are facing after ignoring education, the modern education, the scientific education, the education in, in the, in nation, in modern languages, you cannot ignore. If you ignore these things, you are ignoring your country, your nation, your women, a very important part of your, your nation. And with such behavior, you cannot move ahead. If with this approach you want to move ahead, you cannot move ahead and you cannot combat those crises which you will have to face.
Well, speaking of crisis, there's a huge humanitarian crisis. The United Nations says the humanitarian crisis in Afghanistan is the biggest one in the world as we speak. A record 28.3 million people are in need of assistance this year. Do you feel any breakthrough could be achieved between the United Nations and the Afghan interim government, at least as far as humanitarian aid is concerned or assistance is concerned? Or is this linked in your point of view to the other things that the West is asking?
The response of international community will affect positively. But unless Afghans and Afghan rulers, they by themselves, they don't come up with the vigor, with you know, passion and with very positive approach, they cannot fight back the, the master of poverty, the illiteracy, the orthodox way of thinking, the conservativeness. These are the main, main factors which are spoiling and which are destroying Afghan nation and Afghan country and Afghan, you know, Afghanistan is a very important country in the region. But if you ignore all these segments, you cannot survive.
But you know, Naveed Sahab, you speaking of the United Nations efforts, humanitarian efforts for Afghanistan is concerned, the United Nations humanitarian coordinator has warned that Afghanistan remains the least funded as far as the aid to Afghanistan is concerned. And this might be maybe linked to or because of the fact that the Afghan, the Afghan interim government is not reasoning with the West as far as these basic human rights conditionality are concerned. Do you feel that the humanitarian aid to Afghanistan by the West has been put on the back burner because of this very issue?
Definitely. The world and the West has always been very positive about Afghanistan. They have been ready to, to favor, to support Afghan nation. But you know, Afghan rulers, especially the Taliban, they in their first term, early 25 years back, they have been ruling with the same school of thought, same mentality and ignoring the diplomacy of the world, the politics of the world and the realities of the world. And you know, they suffered it. After 25 years, again they are in power and they are doing the same and they are suffering, the nation is suffering. Can this nation or Afghanistan move ahead in 21st century with a pride? No, I don't think. Unless Afghans sit down, rethink, review their way of thinking, their priorities, their orthodox way, they cannot move ahead. Pakistan has been doing a lot, but Pakistan cannot force them. Pakistan cannot intervene in any, in the, in internal matters of any country. But we can suggest, we are praying for the betterment of Iran and Afghanistan, but we cannot do a lot unless they don't do a lot for themselves.
Now, speaking of Pakistan, Pakistan also continues to believe that it is an urgent priority for the world to advance an approach that is based on pragmatism, that is based on principles, which is combined with strategic patience and identify parameters which could be in the domains of creativity, flexibility, principles and constructive engagement with the Taliban. Could that happen?
Khalid.
Could the world listen to Pakistan's point of view?
Definitely.
I mean, that's a good point.
The world is ready to listen to them, but they are not ready to listen to the world. The problem is this. If Afghan Taliban, they do not understand and they do not start learning from Pakistan, from the neighboring countries, from China, you know, CPEC is there and they can get benefit out of that CPEC project. China is very much, I mean optimistic of the future of, of the region. Pakistan is having very strong collaboration with China on CPEC. Afghanistan is on the other, other side of CPEC. They can also get, get benefit out of it and the, they can arrest their poverty, their, you know, they can learn, they can grow themselves mentally, they can flourish financially. But if they don't think like this, they cannot move ahead.
Naveed Sahab, I'd like to refer to Washington Think Tank, the Middle East Institute that in a report last week had said that might, much as we want or the West wants to have a change in the Afghan mindset or in the Afghan government for the foreseeable future, they say, quote unquote, "A reasonably stable and sufficiently capable Taliban government is needed for three important purposes: help facilitate humanitarian programs, neutralize the Islamic state and avoid state collapse and civil war." Will the West pay heed to this important report?
Definitely, the West is pushing Taliban to come up and respond positively, to, to think the way the West thinks, the way the world thinks. If Taliban are not ready to think the way the world is responding and thinking and ruling their, their countries, they cannot rescue their country and the nation. Taliban will have to rethink. Taliban will have to pull out their mission.
We know the important question mark despite all these meetings that are happening everywhere, I mean in the region and that are happening for the benefit of the people of Afghanistan. But the whole thing ends on the point, will the Afghan interim government listen? Will it react? Will it do something? Will it, does it want to, you know, talk or work or coordinate with the authorities?
This is issue of their mental level, mentality, the way they think. They don't think as the nations think to govern their country and to take their, to steer their nations towards prosperity. They don't think like this. They will have to think. If they don't think, I think the only way is to replace Taliban and encourage all those politicians and the parties or the factors.
But that would lead to a civil war, Naveed Sahab.
It is, it is. But you know, this is not the solution. If Taliban continue running this country for 20 years, the country will be there. The nation will be, will be going backward, not forward. So the, the forward way is the learning of politics, diplomacy, the behaviors, the techniques, the technologies, the attitudes from your neighboring countries, from the international world. And they are ready to learn.
I'd like to also refer to something that Richard Gove, an United Nations expert for International Crisis Group, which is a very renowned NGO, said as far as the United Nations is concerned and Antonio Guterres's role is concerned, because of course, this meeting is being held under the auspices of the United Nations. He said, quote unquote, "Guterres has to untangle a very complicated knot" because he wants the aid to continue moving in Afghanistan. At the same time, he wants the human rights situation to somehow be, you know, go towards the positive or have some kind of a solution as far as this issue is concerned. Will Antonio Guterres be able to untangle this complicated knot?
Khalid, one thing is very important, that is the poverty, the illiteracy or backward net suits some politicians in the region and it suits to Afghanistan politicians as well. They don't want to educate their people, they don't want to develop their people, they don't want to bring them to that standard which is prevailing in the region and which is better in Europe and in West. That is the way they should think that, they have given an impression to their country and the nation that the world is this. This is not the world, this is part of the world. And the world has, has stepped on moon, is exploring the, the entire universe. You know, this is not the time now you pick up the gun and you start fighting. The time has gone. Now you will have to change your style, change your attitude and change your priorities.
But you know, changing attitude, changing priorities, it doesn't seem easy task as far as the Afghan Taliban is concerned.
It is. Their mindset is, you know, very difficult mindset and with this mindset, they cannot come, I mean, meet the requirements of the world. And unless they don't meet the requirements of the world, they cannot move ahead.
Thank you so very much, Naveed Aman Khan Sahab, senior analyst who have joined us, who have talked to us about this meeting that is being held in Qatar, a two-day meeting in which 25 countries and representatives from 25 countries are participating, including Pakistan. Let's see what happens at the end of these two days. Maybe some important decisions will be made, maybe some kind of a breakthrough will happen. Maybe the Afghan Taliban will come into contact with the important countries and maybe they will be showing some flexibility. I mean, there are a lot of maybes, but we can be, we can remain optimistic, Naveed Sahab.
Their response is very important.
Exactly, exactly. I think that will be very important and the outcome of this meeting will also be very, very important. Thank you very much, Naveed Sahab, who have joined us. Let's come to our last two segments. The first concerns, the International Labour Day being observed across the globe today. Of course, the International Labour Day reiterates the fact that all those people who work have need to have their, their recognition as labourers. I mean, when you talk of labourers, it includes myself, it includes all of you who work in any kind of organization, of those who work day and night or even those who, as you can see in the parallel window, work to construct houses and you know, work total day and night in order to earn a decent living for themselves and for their family. Now, this day is commemorated to acknowledge, to commend the invaluable contributions of this labor class. The fundamental objective, as I said in the very beginning of the show, is also to observe the International Labour Days, to acknowledge the hard work and the dedication of the working class, create awareness about their rights and protect them from exploitation. Today also, a lot of rallies were taken out in Pakistan as well as across the globe in favor of the labor class and the labourers and the rights of the labourers. Our president, Dr. Arif Alvi, our prime minister, Shabha Sharif Sahab, our foreign minister, Bilal Bhatto Zardari Sahab, also took out important statements on this very day. I'd like to just refer to what the prime minister said in his message. He expressed the commitment to improve the working and living conditions of the workers and to supplement their welfare by providing them better housing, better education and better health facilities. Foreign Minister Bilal Bhatto Zardari also said Pakistan's prosperity is linked with the prosperity of the workers. He said, "We will get representation for works and farmers in the assembly." The president also said that this year we are celebrating Labour Day with the resolve to reaffirm our commitment to the dignity of labor and pay tribute to the valiant and heroic struggle of the workers for their fundamental rights. It's a very important day, we need to understand the whole concept behind it as well and we need to respect all those who are working in any form, in any category. Lastly, Pakistan has been declared monkeypox-free as the only patient that was, that had been recognized in Islamabad has now officially recovered. This has been stated by the Health Minister Abdul Khatir Patel, who has declared the country free of monkeypox. On Sunday, after the only patient who was afflicted with a disease successfully recovered, he was of course a driver who had come from the King of Saudi Arabia. He came to Islamabad and had presented with symptoms, had gone to the PIMS and of course, had been isolated therein. And there was another patient, the person who was sitting next to him also who got it. Nevertheless, he has now been cured of monkeypox and Pakistan has officially been declared monkeypox-free. Nevertheless, this said, we always need to be cognizant and aware of the symptoms and signs of monkeypox and whatever disease might be, you know, the only way to prevent this is the proper preventive procedures that need to be taken. And we all know about, we've talked about in detail in the previous shows as well. Be aware of all the symptoms and be wary of any disease, whether it be COVID-19 monkeypox or any other disease. I think that is how you can save yourself and those around you. With that, we come to an end of today's news and we'll see you in China tomorrow with news stories segment separated to us, you at Pakistan. Stay safe, Allah Hafiz.